Wood, Rives, and Mr. Ford, give us the invocation. Place your flag.
Everybody bow your heads, please. Lord, we ask you if we can carry on our meeting tonight, that you have your hand of wisdom on us, help us make the best decisions for Columbia County that we can make. We ask you to bless our first responders and our military overseas and here at home. Lord, we ask that you have your hand of protection of everyone that's going to come into this meeting and going from this meeting tonight. And all these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen, Commissioner.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America to the republic which we stand in, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every entity of the government.
Stu, have a seat. Okay. Staff, are there any additions or cleans?
No, sir.
No additions, cleans? I'll seek a motion for approval of the agenda.
Move to approve agenda.
Got a second? Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. At this time, I've got a couple of proclamations. The first is going to be proclamation number 2025 P dash zero two. National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week. If I did get that right, we'll get it again. Okay. Whereas Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetists, CRNAs, are advanced practice registered nurses providing anesthesia care to patients in the United States for more than 150 years. The CRNS, NAs, are among the nation's most trusted profession and whereas legislation passed by Congress in 1986 made nurse anesthetists, anesthetologists, I will say, the first nursing specialty to be accorded direct reimbursement rights by Medicare. And whereas CRNAs are the primary anesthesia providers in rural communities and continue to be the primary providers of anesthesia care to the United States military personnel. Whereas CRNAs are practiced in every setting in which anesthesia is delivered, from traditional hospital surgical suites and obstetrical delivery rooms to critical access hospitals, from ambulatory surgical centers to the offices of dentists, podiatrists, pain management specialists, and more. Whereas CRNAs are qualified to make independent judgments regarding all aspects of anesthesia care based on their education, training, and license. And whereas CRNAs are trusted anesthesia experts caring for patients safely, compassionately, and delivering specialized, cost-effective care to all patients, from newborns to seniors, from every type of procedure and all types of facilities. And whereas CRNAs experience as critical care nursing in addition to anesthesia care provides the training and education to address unique healthcare challenges of some of our sickest patients, including veterans. And whereas a period of January 19th through the 25th, 2025, has been designated as National CRNA Week. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners, Columbia County, Florida, hereby proclaim the week of January 19th through the 25th, 2025, as National Certified Registered Nurses' Anesthesia's Week. Tim Murphy, Board of County Commissioners Chairman, and James Swisher, Park Court. Is anybody here to receive this? There's old Billy Jones.
Billy, if I'd known you was here, I'd have had you read all those big words for me.
Billy's sitting there saying, ain't no way Murphy's gonna get that word.
I'll make a motion, we approve proclamation number 2025 P dash O two.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. All right, we've got proclamation number 2025 P dash zero one. Read and presented this the other night at Ron Williams's dinner, and I seek a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion? We got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Okay. Louis, looks like you got the front row for a while here.
Good evening, commissioners. The first public hearing we have tonight is consideration of ordinance 2025 dash O one for application Z 25241002. This is for zoning change requests on a parcel up on 441 as described in your packet, and it's consolidation of two different... Currently, the parcel has two different zoning designations. This is to make it all one residential mobile home park, period.
And this is District One, correct?
District One, yes.
So is this...
Yes, sir.
So is this going to be dedicated to a certain area? Or is this going to be just a mobile home park? Is there going to be anything that's going to...
There will be a mobile home park, and the conceptual plans include some amenities to it and so forth like that, but we haven't had seen the next step will be the site plan that will be presented to the board of the plans on the board.
Okay, all right. Motion approved.
Okay, we've got this public hearing. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak for or against?
You gotta come up.
Yes, ma'am.
No, ma'am. This is not Moore Road.
This isn't Moore Road.
This is the one on 41, 441. Okay. We're not seeing yet. Didn't see it yet. Okay, not seeing none. I declare the public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board? Now you can go, Kip.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, Louis?
All right, the next ordinance is 2025 O two to consider a rezoning of a parcel on Moore Road as described in your packet there. Currently, our zone is Ag three. It is within the Duda and eligible to be rezoned to rural residential. Essentially, it's going to be one acre lots versus the five acre lot subdivisions that would be allowed in the current zoning.
Louis, read that. Let's see the number again, please.
The ordinance is 2025 dash O two.
Okay, okay. I thought you said O three. Okay. Okay.
And this is for the rezoning from Ag three to rural residential.
This is the one on Moore Road?
It is on Moore Road, yes.
Correct? Okay. All right. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? You got to come up here to dress us up.
We all hard here.
How you doing? Been a while.
Long time.
Yes, I'm again, there were some other people supposed to come, but they didn't get off work in time. But it butts up right at the back of my place, and I've got a pond that goes from one end to the other. And then right down at the other end of the road, we've got a mobile home park that they've already had shootings and all in. And that's my concern because I've got my grandsons with me, yeah, but he fishes in my pond all the time. And I don't want it up there and then, then if they've got kids and they can get in my pond and probably get hurt or something. And then you've got wildlife here now, all the wildlife. Where's all the wildlife going to go if you keep cutting all the trees down and keep putting in mobile home parks?
So you live on the, you live on the east side of that piece of property?
I live right there on the curb where the sawmill was at.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I know where you're at. Yeah.
And Ms. Ship, this is, if you're looking at your house coming, the curve goes to the right?
It's right directly behind me.
Dead behind, right? Okay, I thought that's where it was.
Because the pond out there, when they put up the jail the first time where it is in Five Points, they used the dirt out of it to, when they was building the jail.
Jailbird pond.
Okay. All right. Okay, we appreciate you, and we'll discuss it here in a minute. Any others to speak for or against? At this time, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board? Any discussion?
So is the developer, is the developer here or...
I don't see him here now, but I might remind the board that this is not the density of a normal mobile home park. If it becomes mobile home, it'll be eligible for mobile homes, but rural residential, the density is no less than one acre parcels in that type subdivision.
One acre subdivision?
One acre subdivision, yes.
How large is the parcel?
Um...
It's 60 acres.
60 acres.
And it's on what now, Louis?
It's on Ag three now, and it's within the Duda that was recently adopted to expand it up there to allow it to go to a rural residential zoning.
Joe, Joe, you don't mind me asking you a question? Ms. Ship, I understand your concern because I've been around that pond. That pond's got a deep sides to it, and it's a deep pond. Kid couldn't get out of there if he fell in it.
What can she do? What are the legal, does she have to put a barrier up that? Or will, do they do that? Or what's her best?
I can't really give specific legal advice, you know, outside the scope of the duties of the board, but I can say as a general proposition, a pond is considered an open and notorious hazard, and it's not the kind of thing we have to enclose swimming pools.
Oh, okay.
Because they're artificial, do have to be enclosed. But generally, it's kind of like a fire. We expect, you know, we know fires are dangerous, we know ponds are dangerous, things like that. So the level of expectation in terms of that is not so great. Also would echo Mr. Gooden's concern that, you know, you're at the zoning phase right now trying to determine what level of density might be allowed. It does not necessarily mean that it would be a maximum density use. We don't know that yet.
All the property pretty much to the east of that is already subdivided and properties on the two sides of it subdivided.
I mean, we need the housing here. I would, I would do want to address Ms. Ship's concerns, though. If, we don't want to bring anything to the area that's going to be unsafe. And I understand her point about her pond, things of that nature.
Commissioner, that can be handled during the site development and the preliminary plat. Those concerns can be addressed at that point in time.
Okay, so...
Right now, it's just a zoning change.
Just a zoning change. Okay, all right. Well, we'll, we'll address that when the time comes then. So we'll then, now start the motion. So now we'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve 2025 dash zero two.
So second it.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. But Ms. Ship, as you heard, when the time comes to put the restrictions and what have you, they'll be able to work, everybody should be able to work together, find everybody in the neighborhood there. Okay, Louis?
All right, the third public hearing I got is consider ordinance 2025 dash O three. This is companion bill to the previous one, asking for a flume change, future land use map change from residential medium to residential multifamily. Excuse me. Residential medium to... It's going to be residential low.
Resident, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Residential low. Future land use allows a little bit more density than Ag does. That's basically what it's asking for there.
Mm-hmm. Okay, at this time, open public hearing for 2025 dash zero three. Anybody here to speak for or against? I think we can go on the record and say Mr. Ship is against it, you know, without her coming back up if she, unless she wants to. Anybody else? Okay, not seeing any. I declare public hearing 2025 dash zero three closed. What's the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to approve that, so we get more density.
Got a motion to approve. Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. Louis?
Next public hearing is the consideration of subdivision, a minor subdivision, 240801, replat of lots one and two of Commander Court in the airport area out there. This is, this is District Five, and Commissioner Murphy's aware of it and as it's described in your packet there.
Okay, at this time, I declare the public hearing open for SD 24 dash zero eight zero one. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing any. I declare the public hearing closed. I'm well aware of this, and me and Louis have been working together on District White sometime. Kevin, this is one that I think somebody at one time might have asked if there's entrance off of... This is going in, Commander, taking left, it's, it's all good. No complaints from no neighbors. So I'll make the motion to accept as presented.
Okay.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right. Two more, Louis?
All right, the next one is consideration of minor site plan, excuse me, minor subdivisions for similar action in Turkey Run subdivision. Clay and Karina Turner wish to replat three parcels or three platted parcels in Turkey Run into one. This is in District Three. This has been duly adjusted and advertised and ready for presentation to be offered consideration.
Okay, at this time, I declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? You have to come up, sir, I can't hear you. I'm, I'm old. Just give the clerk your name, please, and address. Look up here. Okay.
Like Louis said, we wanted to combine our three lots into one lot because we're trying to put a building up, and we didn't, kind of didn't want it on the same lot as the house, more or less, or, or, or the 15 feet, I think the 15 feet from the line it had to be. So we were just trying to get it a little further back since we own that back lot and the side lot in which we do not plan on selling at all. You know, plan on keeping it undeveloped, except for a building. Like a storage building, garage type.
It makes, it makes sense. I'm your commissioner, it makes total sense to do what you're doing. We understand, I understand completely.
So where, where is the lot she's talking about? I, I built that subdivision, it used to be my old home place, so I'm kind of wondering, is it around here by the pond area?
The retention pond, like by the mailboxes? No, it's on the other corner. It's diagonal from that. It's on the corner of Feld Circle and Apple Land.
Okay, yeah, that's right in there by that low area?
The low area.
The low area, okay.
That's a, I think that's a lot next to us.
Okay, I understand what you're trying to do now. Okay, no problem.
All right, thanks, sir. Anybody else to speak for or against? Okay, not seeing any. I declare the public hearing closed. Wishes of the board?
I move that we approve SD 241101.
Second. Yes. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Louis?
Last one. This is the application for minor subdivision on Lake Jeffrey Road. It's currently two parcels, about a quarter of a mile, if that, from the interstate to the west of the interstate. Ms. Chabik is the agent for the applicant here, and they're going to be combining two lots and subdivided into three, all facing the road, no problems with access or anything like that. But like I said, it's about, was it about a quarter mile from the interstate to the west on the north side of Lake Jeffrey, as noticed in your packet there, located in the packet.
Okay, I declare the public hearing open for SD 24 dash 1203. Anybody here to speak for or against? Not seeing any. I declare the public hearing closed. Wishes of the board?
I move that we approve subdivision 241203.
Second. Got a motion, got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you, Louis.
Y'all have a good night.
Go get in your truck and go home.
We love you, Louis. I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second. Got a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Move to adopt.
Got a motion to adopt.
Come on.
You got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Kevin?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item is Budget Amendment 2519. This is down in Ellisville. It will create the budget that was approved back in November by the board. The reimbursement agreement for design, destruction, and CEI of I-75 Columbia County Forest Main Rest Area Project. This is the tool that's going to hold us over till we build a big sewer plant. So I'm requesting a motion to approve BA 2519 budget for FDOT agreement for Forest Main Rest Area Project in the amount of $1.635 million.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you. The next item is Fiscal Year 2425 Traffic Signal Maintenance and Compensation Agreement and Resolution 2025 R one. Reimbursement will be $123,992. This is a tool that takes care of your signalized intersections. I'm requesting a motion to approve Traffic Signal Maintenance Agreement and Resolution 2025 R one.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Okay, once a year, we submit scrap, scot, sig, and tap through FDOT. This is where we compete with other counties to capture our longer paving projects, those that we cannot afford out of our annual resurfacing money. Remember, this is a five-year program, commissioners. So what we do tonight, we submit for five years from now. What do you currently have in the hopper? Northeast Bascom Drive, this is a sidewalk job from 441 at Five Points over to US 90 East. Country Club Road from 252 to Bay Avenue. Arlington Drive and County Road Arlington Drives over off of Sisters Welcome Road and County Road 18 from 41 over to the Union County Line. That's what is currently in the hopper. So those are jobs you have. Before you, you'll see your maps that just clearly indicate what I just said. So what is proposed? County Road 18, so we're supposed to submit three projects. Back in the old days, we did six projects, and we categorized them scrap, scot, and sig. Last few years, they say, look, real simple, give us three projects, and we'll determine whether they're best suited. So County Road 18 from Fort White over to 41, this is the sister job of the one that's currently in the hopper. County Road 250E, we've submitted this multiple times through the year, which is Gum Swamp Road and Eight Mile Project. Cannon Creek Drive and Arrowhead Terrace from Kick Ladder to 242, that's over in Mr. Hollisburg District. So basically, I've described to you what you have in the hopper, and these are the three projects I'm recommending that we could pursue five years from now. Of course, it makes it to the DOT, and they let us know if it made the cut or not. We can compete with multiple counties. With that, I'm requesting a motion to approve submission to FDOT for scrap, scot, sig, and tap funding of projects, County Road 18, County Road 250, Arrowhead, and Cannon Creek.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Kevin, before we move on, Rocky, tune in any time, but we were in Tallahassee the other day, and the scrap, scot, of course, again, you know, on the target of some to, you know, make some cuts. So, I mean, Senator Shook, you know, he insured us, and of course, the President of the Senate is kind of topping their priority, most especially for us rural counties. And Rocky, if you like.
I was just going to say, and Senator Bradley also has assured us that they're working on raising the threshold for the small counties to be approved for these programs. As everyone knows, we are on the verge of being right there at that threshold now, so...
That's a big pot of money, Kevin, so that, as you well know, that's an easy one for Tallahassee to go after, you know?
And commissioners, in an effort of transparency, for example, all of your funding down in Ellisville, and like you're funding at Bascom Norris Drive, those are other areas of funding that Tallahassee is so good to us with. This is just simply that one annual program, the five-year work program, and we've been very successful through the years in knocking these out. And without, you know, only put, without their help, you cannot accommodate more than a million dollar jobs. We could afford it in a year if you can't pay one job for $4,000.
If we didn't have their help, probably wouldn't have us be sitting here because we have roads, you know, roads with as much growth as we have here. I mean, those roads like Burley, we can't afford to fix those roads.
Well, they have assured us they are looking out for it.
They have. Yep.
They assured us this is going to be a banner year for small counties, so we'll see.
I only, I hope so. Okay, Kevin?
Thank y'all. Final thing I have is bid number 2024M Lime Rock. As we all know, we have to use a lot of lime rock. We received one bid, Beaver Book, $16 per ton. Requesting motion award bid number 2024M to Beaver Book in the amount of $16 per ton.
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Let me, let me say something about that. Kevin, is there any possibility of not using quite so much lime rock on these dirt roads?
I mean, we got dirt... You shook up when you said that.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, I, I know you have bad spots, and it's a good fix, but I've noticed some of the roads that's flat and could be used dirt on it. Is that a possibility to save a little money?
So, Commissioner, roads, I'll equate the public sector. You can spend as much money as you can afford on roads. Your constituents demand a very high level of service on their roads. We still have over 400 miles of dirt roads left in this county. It's very subject to opinion. If you're to ask me, pull the ditches up, let it be a dirt road. But everybody does not agree with me. We do use a concern of mine lime rock. There's really no easy way to answer that question. When our work orders come in, and I think you all agree, we knock them out. I mean, I was looking at a list today. We recovered from the hurricanes, and I saw that thing way up there because we got behind. I looked this recent evening, we're down to eight unacted work orders, which we're back to where we should be. To answer your question, I guess, if we don't put lime rock down for our public demands it, we're just going to get beat up pretty heavy by it.
Mr. Murphy, I'm going to go ahead and tell you. I got most of the dirt roads in Columbia County. I need lime rock.
Well, before we get off the subject, Mr. Chairman, I do want to bring something up about these bids. Like this particular bid was like $11 to $16 a ton, okay? We have a standard policy that covers what I call operational services, and then we have a standard policy that covers professional services, such as striping, lime rock, concrete, things of that nature. By policy, I have to re-advertise in three years. Your professional service, your engineering, things like that, is every five years, by policy. That worked extremely well until COVID. I'm of the opinion, Cal, I'm going to need your help here, I'll think in a second. I'm of the opinion, if your vendor, in this case, your vendor was saying, I got to have some relief. This, there's no way I could do this for what I did it three years ago. did it three years ago. I'm of the opinion, if you have vendors that are not complaining, and not asking for price increases, I think we're hurting ourselves with that policy. Because I promise you, we set the budget October first, and we use a lot of lime rock. So, there's twenty tons to a load rock, okay? If we pump up, what is that, eighty bucks a load? It's not gonna be hard to figure out. I want to move some money around, because we budgeted for what we did last year at eleven dollars a tank, whatever the math was. So, and, Mr. Foreman, I want to need your help here a minute. I need to bring to this board's attention, we, we are simply, I've not seen anything go down. So I'm of the opinion, if your contractor, your vendor is not complaining, I do not understand why we would mandate to go out to readvertisement, knowing it's going up. Joe, can you help me?
So, yeah, I've, I've been up here for about ten years this month, believe it or not. I can't believe it. Um, we did this not long after I started. So it's been about eight, nine, ten years, this policy's been out there, where we've got this drop dead. And we've negotiated a lot of contracts, where we tell the contractor across the table, the board's got a policy, no, you can't have a renewal provision, no, you can't have an extension provision. We just cut you off. Now, all but Commissioner Parnell will probably remember when EMS came up, when, or excuse, not EMS, uh, solid waste, we had to push off, or no, it was EMS. Remember, we had them on the same schedule?
First time I saw EMS.
And we said, we gotta do it. So we've had to waive this policy multiple times for practical reasons. What, the conversation we had earlier this week, and I thought was very interesting, is, you know, when you think there's gonna be about two or three percent every year, and yeah, relit in every five years, you're not gonna hurt yourself too bad. We're now forcing ourselves to relit contracts where we might be looking at thirty percent increases.
Right.
Where the contractor would be okay with not doing that. But we have to go to bid, and of course, anytime you open up the bid. So, the discussion that Kevin and I had, and it's not something y'all can do tonight, it's just food for thought, is, let's maybe massage that policy, let's give staff some latitude, let's maybe work in. I can draft a, a, a renewal provision that says it has to be in the mutual best interest of the county, it has to be in the best interest of the county.
Yeah.
Where staff can very easily, and kind of low-key, do a survey, you know, what are these materials costing right now? And if the cost is higher than what's in our contract, we can just negotiate for extension. If the cost is, you know, kind of, if we're not gonna be too, hurt too bad, then we can make the decision we're not gonna extend. But right now, you have a hard and fast policy. Three years, five years. Yeah, Commissioner Murphy, you probably have real vivid memories of this, because this was a pretty hot issue when it first came up. So I think the conversation Kevin and I had, the reason he's asking me to help is, I think that's probably what the discussion needs to be, is as we go forward negotiating new contracts, can staff have the latitude to negotiate in extensions? And then if we want to waive the policy with respect to current outstanding contracts, we can talk about that, too. But it's food for thought for now. Um, but I think the point's well made, that, you know, this impact of inflation, everybody likes to say, well, we're over that, we're past that now. We may not be. You know, you could have a turn in the market eighteen months from now, and you could have another twenty percent spike in inflation. You don't know until it happens. If people knew, and they could tell you, they'd make a lot more money than we do. So, that's kind of, did I cover everything, Kevin? I think that was what we wanted. Just make sure you guys are thinking about it. We'll get together, we'll bring some proposals.
Go ahead.
So Kevin, is this lime rock, is this price delivered to your, so, why don't we just pick the lime rock up from the mine?
We, we, we've studied it. Um, and it, and it might be something restudied back when it was, I've studied it twice. We actually usually haul to Ellisville and Lake City, and Fort White times. So we try to make it geographical convenience, okay? We do so many, or like, when we build a new road, that's easy. But when we're around doing what Mr. Phillips referred to, what you commented on, you know, we try to be smart geographically. But financially, it's better off to have the book big tandem ax, dump trailers, haul, put it in a pile, and we just feed out of a pile. Because you're going from Brantford, that's where the mine is, and for us to go to Brantford and get a load, I don't have enough dump trucks to be efficient, is the bottom line. If I'm working at Deep Creek, you know, Lake City's pretty much centrally located, then Ellisville, and then Fort White, so I cover all eighteen and that side of Fort White over there with Ellisville and, uh, Commissioner Phillips' district. I catch Mr. Parnell's district right there, you know, town on the west side. But, uh, at the end of the day, the point of this is, Joe, you said it better than I did. Back in the old days, I would say three or four percent increase every time we do this. Now, in this case, the owner of the vendor was needing help, said, I gotta get out of this, I'm losing money. But we have a lot of contracts out there that nobody is complaining. Nobody is saying a word, they're doing the work. And to me, business sense does not tell you, if the guy's cutting grass for fifty dollars a week, you're happy with his service, and you know, you get rid of him, you're gonna pay eighty dollars a week, why would you do that?
It's like ordering a cup of coffee, and the guy says, a dollar fifty. Well, I'll give you two.
Right.
I mean, it don't make sense, especially when it's taxpayer dollars.
But we could do both, because we could haul from the mine and from, we could have, have some dump at the time.
And we, and we do at times.
Oh, we do.
We do.
Yeah, but I, I mean, I know it's gonna be cheaper if you pick it up at the mine. Yeah. But if you got to haul it twice as far, I, I understand that.
Well, it's still a bit.
But if you're working in South Bend, it's count, like you said, it's in Brantford.
No question. And that's why we haul it to, uh, Fort White, that's why we haul it to Ellisville.
Till you deep.
I'm talking about my, my vendor does.
It's hard.
My vendor.
Yeah.
Well, I, I'm not trying to say not use lime rock. I'm just trying to say, is there a way to trim it down a little bit to help this cost of this lime rock? I know it's up. I deal with it every day. And I know that you can get a better price if you have it hauled up here by them big trucks versus the small truck. We know that. So, I'm just, I'm speaking, trying to maybe say.
Commissioner Phillips, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll stop hauling lime rock in your district. When they start calling, you tell them where you want it at.
Hey, I'm not saying don't do it, but I'm saying in some spots.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
Kevin, real quick, uh, you know, I, my opinion is, I, I think we're just gonna look at it. Me and you talked about this early on this week, you know, and, but I'm with you. I, I agree a hundred percent, you know, if, if they're not griping, i- at this time and day, because look what we're doing on Bascom Norris, you know, we're still, uh, it's the times, you know?
I'm gonna come back to you.
That word COVID's still out there.
It is.
And they're using that as a tool.
Well, if you'll recall, back in them days, we added forty percent, our capital projects, forty percent. That is, with exception of that one job, that is tracking just as right as the rain. That's unbelievable.
It is.
That it did that. But it did. But I can promise y'all this, y'all go out, whether it be striping, concrete, all this guardrail stuff, you will not hold the price you hold today. And if I had this all to do over again, I'd have figured out, whatever contract was coming due this fiscal year, I'd have let them at budget time, so at least I would know what I was doing. But we've never seen this thirty percent jump until recent times.
Well, you know, the times of Jeff, and Jeff's up there more frequent than anybody, getting us to purchase ahead of time, you know, and, like you said, you know, you can go to sleep and spend another hundred thousand dollars in his business.
Commissioner, I believe it was you the other day, told me concrete's going up. How much a yard?
Five dollars a yard.
Five dollars a yard?
Yep, five dollars a yard, March first.
Kevin, I want to ask you something. You been here how long?
Long time.
Well, you are old, but, um, have you ever seen growth in roads, and growth in need for roads, and the growth we're seeing right now, and the things we're having to do to, to keep up? I think it's, I think in the last two or three, even two years.
Eighteen months.
It's blown up.
And the band, big part of price.
Well, so here's the difference.
And we're still, we're still using the same pot of money we were, pretty, you know what I mean?
I remember like yesterday, you could make, haul, and lay asphalt for thirty-two dollars a ton, and it's two hundred dollars a ton today.
And, 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 and we have, you know, like you used to say, counties aren't like private businesses. We don't make big hits. We don't, we don't go one year and get a bunch of money, and the next year, not get much. I mean, it's usually steady, you know, the tax base is steady.
Somebody told me today, Mr. Ford and I were talking about it, there was a rumor out there that all the dirt roads, by law, needs to be paved in twelve years. Let me ask you that.
In how long?
Twelve years. I said, well, that's only about five hundred twenty-five million, sir. Thank you so much.
All right, David?
So, uh, this next item is, we're asking to set a date, hearing date, to have a public hearing on the Live Local Act. It was adopted in twenty twenty-three, and it was basically created by the legislature to incentivize the creation of what they call workforce housing in Florida. What that meant is forty percent of the units have to be set aside for thirty years, as affordable for people earning eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of the area's median income. There's a lot to it, more than the two components, but the two components, I think, that brings, uh, it to everybody's attention is, the first component is, there's land use entitlements. Things that are in your land use plan don't count when it comes to the Live Local Act. If it is a commercial, industrial, or mixed use area, you have to approve it administratively, there's no public hearings, and you have to, you have very little discretion when it comes to that. The second part is, there's an exemption for property taxes. And that means local property taxes can be exempted, um, but only if there's a surplus of affordable housing, as determined by the Sherenberg Center for Housing Studies. Uh, Joel's researched it, he's found out that right now, we're in a, a group of counties in that area, we are at a surplus. So, we can opt out, but you have to do this every year. This is not a permanent opt-out, this is an annual type situation. Uh, we're requesting to set the date for, uh, opting out of the Live Local Act. That's February twentieth twenty-five. Do I anything, Joel?
I did say nothing.
That's honest.
The, uh, the, uh, opt-out, guys, just to be clear, is only for the tax exemption portion. So like, like David said, there's two tracks that the legislature implemented here. The, the land use is, if you're in that commercial, industrial, or mixed use district, the presumption is, well, there's already adequate facilities for whatever kind of residential use they want to make. So they're allowed to build the tallest building that's available under your commercial or industrial standards, and the densest neighborhood that's available under your residential standards in any of those zoning districts, without going to anybody, right? So, and that's still true, okay? That's gonna continue to be true. To get that, they have to promise the forty percent of all units for, uh,
Thirty years.
Low income for thirty years. Well, the only way you can make that math work is if you get the tax exemption, okay? Couple of sessions ago, they just adopted this, but right out of the box, there were smaller communities who came forward and said, well, you didn't make any requirement in there that, that the savings on these tax exemptions get passed on to the renters. We don't think it's fair, we don't want to participate. They tried to opt out of the whole thing, legislature said, no, not gonna let you do that, but if you have enough affordable housing, we will let you opt out of the tax exemption, since that seems to be something giving everybody heartburn that went through. You're now seeing a wave of smaller municipalities, even actually not so small counties, that already have enough affordable housing, saying, we're putting it on the shelf. Now, once you put it on the shelf, for that year effectively, you're not gonna get a lot of interest in these projects because the numbers just don't work. If you guys remember, we kind of had the benefit of Sweetwater, where you could see how tightly they crunch those numbers. When you take this tax exemption off the table, they can't really commit forty percent for thirty years. So, it's kind of like, you're not taking it away, but you are taking it away. So, it's a discretionary decision to the board. I do have to prepare the ordinance. I think the soonest we could have it heard would be the second meeting in February, which is the next night meeting. So, if it's something the board's interested in doing, we just need to set the hearing.
Well, I, I really appreciate Troy, our building department official, bringing this to our attention, you know, because there's been, uh, developers, if you want to say, if that's, uh, in the neighborhood, looking at this, you know? I, I've never heard of such a thing. But Rocky, we had a conversation about this in Tallahassee the other day also. And, uh,
It's a big, it's a big concern with a lot of smaller counties.
A lot. You know, it, it was designed for Miami-Dade, Palm Beach, that type of stuff, Tampa. But, uh, great, sooner the better. As Troy said, but somewhere along the line, I don't know how y'all do it on these computers, but make sure that we do not miss that deadline every year.
Every January.
Every day.
So the University of Florida Center, the Schenberg, or whatever it's called, they release a report, and the way the legislature wrote it, it's whatever they say. So it's whatever they say. We're like a hundred and twelve affordable housing units over on the surplus, but we're in like a five-county region. Uh, some of these areas are, you know, literally just the city they'll look at, but we're so spread out. So we have that surplus now. Um, my suggestion would be to continue to ride that wave. Uh, but it could very easily shift. One of the things we talked about the other day, you know, changes in the economy, you could have a large increase of the number of folks that fall in that eighty to one twenty range for some reason, you know, uh, depression, recession, something like that. And you could lose your deficit without ever having built or torn down a single building. So, um, we'll get it ready.
All right. In addition to our tax exemption, they also get a tax exemption from the state.
Exactly. Okay, I'll seek a motion.
Man, you got a bunch of them.
On this.
Move that we set a date for the Public Hearing on the Live Local Act. So what we need. I guess we need to set a date.
February twentieth.
February twentieth.
Set the date February twentieth for the Live Local Act.
Yeah.
Second.
Got a second, got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right. The next item is mobile health integrated services with the Florida Department of Health. Basically, this is an MOU that the Department of Health is doing with all our neighboring counties. They've already executed it with Baker County. It basically says, we're going to ask to use your paramedicine crews, and if you let us use your paramedicine crews to help our clients, we will reimburse you what we collect. And this is the agreement that lets us get into that agreement with them. Uh, Mr. Crawford, Mr. Hiller here, if you have any questions on it.
I'll deal with it. I trust what Jeff and them got going. They're handling it.
I'll make a motion. We approve memorandum agreement for mobile community health integrated services.
Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next one is the Budget Amendment twenty-five sixteen, transfer of equipment reserve to Capitol Outlay for fire and rescue. Basically, and during budget time, we talked about buying another fire truck. Now, we know, the last apparat, two apparatuses we bought, we ordered two years ago, and they're just now coming in. In fact, we received both of them within the last month. So, we budgeted to do it. Now, some of the money we've spent, I don't know, existing ones, but those, the money for those went into fund balance. So what we're asking is a budget amendment to take half of the money out of fund, out of equipment reserves, money that we set there for equipment reserves, along with money they have in their current year budget, to buy another fire engine. And they have one that they've identified that is a demo unit that should be available in a couple months. Uh, their argument is, if we buy this particular unit, not only do we get it in a couple months, but we will save over a hundred thousand dollars over the cost of buying it and then receiving it two years later.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. So this is the engine, correct, Jeff? And the two eighty is coming out of the, right here as the outlay, correct? And that's then plus Jeff to come up to the four eighty.
Right. So he would have had four eighty, but when one of these two trucks came in, we took some of it and just paid it out of his account. So now we're just basically taking it from the equipment reserve and putting it back in his account.
Have they given us a month when we get the truck?
I think, you said two months?
Two months, yes, was, yeah. Versus two years.
Yeah.
Yeah. I move, I move that we approve BA twenty-five sixteen, authorized pressure, T-one fretliner, four-door pumper.
Got a motion and a second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next one is agreement number L zero zero two zero, the Columbia County Ellisville Well Redundancy Project. We've talked about this before. This is the agreement that will allow us to build a third water well in Ellisville.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next one is the amended commercial building lease with Columbia EMS. We currently lease space to our EMS provider. We've always done this since we've gotten into the privatization of EMS services. Uh, we currently have two buildings that we were leasing to them. We just wanted to add the reporter building, because they're using it temporarily for a couple months, and this would protect us on insurance and liability issues. Uh, so we're asking you to approve the amended agreement to include the old Lake City reporter building.
So moved. I've got a, uh, card on this for Mr. Looker. Okay.
So moved.
Say it. Got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
The next one is to reschedule the dates of SP twenty-four one-two-zero-one, the laser light show. Basically, the racetrack was going to a laser light show, the weather was really, really bad. So they want to reschedule it for the end of the month, basically January thirty-first and February first. So we're just asking you to reschedule that particular event.
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
And we already approved this. It, we just moving to change of the date.
Change of the date.
They have a change of date with weather up north.
So the next one's BA twenty-five fifteen, transfer of funds for the sheriff's office. This is a This is a good thing. If you remember during the budget, we took money and set it aside for future raises for the officers, so when the new sheriff came into office, the money would be available. The new sheriff has come into office. He is requesting the money, as you can see from his letter. He is requesting it for giving raises to his officers.
I move that we approve BA twenty-five dash fifteen.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. All approve.
Actually, technically, I think it's all his employees.
Excuse me?
Technically, it's all his employees, not just the officers.
Correct. Yes. Yeah, but they're looking forward to it, that's for sure.
And the last one that I have is the adoption of the bylaws for the Columbia County tourist development. They have gone over them. They've revised them, and they're just asking me to approve them.
Move that we approve and adopt the updated TDC bylaw.
And I've got a card on this, Mr. Looker. I'll second it, by the way.
Unless he changes my mind.
He'll change your mind.
Unless he changes my mind.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little confused by this. I have a question. You just announced that this was revised, yet when you look at this document, and this is now happening throughout the county with job descriptions and other things, there's nothing on the bottom of the page that shows it's revised or what the date of the revisions are. So, I think this needs to be updated because this is not rescind. The old bylaws have not been rescinded in this. You're just approving a by, I'm sorry, you're approving revised bylaws, but it doesn't give the date on, and I tried to get some of these somewhat successfully from the TDC. If you look at page one-eighty-two on your agenda, where that would normally go, it gives no revision dates or what the, where the other leases can even, where, what is being revised? What leases are those? This recently happened with the jobs descriptions too, where if you recall in the past, when Ms. Roberts was running HR, you always had across the bottom of the job descriptions the dates of the revisions. Now, you have a whole bylaw set of bylaws being revised that has no date of revisions. So, I'm in respect for the question that this needs to be looked into and at least added to this one for now because you're revising this, but nobody even knows what's changed or if anything's changed or if everything's changed. That's it. Maybe Mr. Foreman, could you have some help with this? Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I can touch on this real quick. The previous TDC director, for whatever reason, neglected to get this to the board. This has been vetted by the TDC Advisory Board, and this is basically, let's call it housekeeping, correct? And, but, but I understand what Mr. Looker's saying, and it doesn't happen very often, but I have to agree with him, but we can, but I'm going to have TDC, you know, send to you at their leisure. When they got time, they're very busy, shorthanded, but we'll point out, you were probably at some of the meetings, I don't know if you were or not, but the, when these changes were reviewed and what have you, but we'll follow up on it, try to get you some information. Well, and I understand again, boy, I'm going really deep twice in one day, but, but what Stu's saying is it's come forth here, but me as the chair of, and then Rocky as the chair of the Economic Development, Robert the chair, whatever, you know, we kind of rely, correct me if I'm wrong, Joel, on our input and our participation, you know, and the board can read everything we've read here, you know, then if you do your homework. I understand, but we can do a better job, I think, in the future, Stu, by simply lining out what the changes are, just that simple. I think that's what you think.
So, Sheriff, this goes back to March. I was just looking at my records. I did this in March of twenty-four.
Right.
This is almost a year ago. And just to let the board know, the former director gave me like this raw document. This is what I think about, and I don't know if, we had to make some extensive changes. They were wanting to change board composition, things that couldn't be done. What I'll do, Mr. Looker, I'll try to go through my notes and see if I can find something to produce to you, because I, again, no problem sharing that. You're exactly right. I mean, if it was based off of an old approved set of bylaws, which I don't even know that it was, to be honest with you, and it was a raw document that I got. So, we'll do a little research. We'll get that to you. I think it's, you know, go, go, Commissioner Murphy, it's a point well made. I think we need to address it.
The, but what we're doing here has been approved on the TDC. I don't see no proof, really, why you can't prove it now.
No, no, no. You can approve, but I think for posterity, we will make some annotations.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
All right. Yes, sir.
If you choose to vote to approve it and you would like, you can amend it to include the date of revision to be added to the bottom of each page, so that in the future, you see the date of revision on the bottom of each page.
Okay. You get that, clerk? All right, I got a motion.
Does Robert need to change his motion to add the date?
He should amend his motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Direct.
What date do we want to do it?
It'd be today.
Just make the motion that the date will be added.
Oh, the date will be added at another time. Okay, I'm in my motion for approval and adoption of updated TDC laws. Date to be determined. Is that what you want?
Yeah.
For today?
Date of today.
Date of today, then. Approval and adoption of updated TDC bylaws as of today.
And I'll second that. You good with that, Ms. Clerk? She's shaking her head, so she isn't. All in favor, say aye. All approve.
Thank you very much.
What does presenter one and two mean? What does this mean? Presenter one and two? Must be a typo.
You don't have, I don't have that on mine. They're trying to slip you.
No, I have nothing here.
Presenter one and two.
And let y'all off the hook.
I thought y'all was trying to
We're trying to trip you.
I asked that twice this week, didn't get answers, so I figured I'd try it again. But my, just for the, the people attending, it says presenter one, presenter two, then Joe Foreman, County Attorney, ain't nothing else there, so I think we'll do better on that next time.
We don't, I don't have
I don't have
I think everybody else got it clean. I think you're looking
They're just trying to trip you up.
They just need to be a special one.
I guess so. Trying to trip you up.
There you go. Okay. Open public comments in the board, three-minute limits. I've got one here by Mr. Kinter.
If you wouldn't mind, say your name into the mic so everybody can hear.
My name's Ken Turk. I own the property on the corner of Racetrack Road and four-forty-one. I'm here about the debris pile. Mr. Phillips and I have talked about it. He's aware of it because he's my commissioner, but I thank y'all for this opportunity to talk to y'all about it. I got a letter from the county here saying that I get a thousand-dollar-a-day fine for illegal dumping. Now, my hurricane debris that I removed, and it's not near about all of it because my place got blew down, okay? I got twenty-five acres there, and I hauled out what I could to Racetrack Road, and then I hauled the rest of it out to four-forty-one. I watched the commission's emergency meeting where y'all amended the price which you were going to pay your contractor, the debris, and where you set the date for us to have our debris hauled out to the road. Then I bought the newspaper that week to make sure that I was complying with what I was supposed to do. Now, in short sense, I did what I was supposed to do. That Saturday, I didn't haul out anything else because I broke the loader on my tractor, so I didn't even go back Sunday. I was done Saturday with what I could get out. What's still there is just there, okay? Called the county. County says, "No problem. I'll send you over to, oh, Mr. Jack, Mr. Jack Beach, I think his name was, the gentleman at the other part of the county, I talked to Winston, which was the coded portion. Mr. Beach said, "No problem. We'll take care of it. Don't worry about a thousand-dollar-a-day fine. We'll get it taken care of. We'll call DOT." So, two, three weeks went by, and it still wasn't picked up, and he told me, "Don't even worry about calling back." So, I didn't. Two, three weeks went by, it still wasn't picked up. I called Mr. Phillips. I said, "Look here, got a problem going on." Since then, I've talked to three people up the chain at DOT. All three tell me the same thing. The county set the agenda. It's the county's problem. It's not our problem. County says it's not our problem because it's on a state highway. And I say, "Well, in the meeting and in the newspaper, it didn't say, 'Hey, don't put your stuff on the state highway because the DOT's not coming back. They're done with two passes.'" I had no way, no citizen has a way of knowing that. So, DOT says that they are not coming back because they made two passes. County says, "We're done. It's not on our road. I'm a citizen with a problem. I can't deal with a thousand-dollar-a-day fine." I just simply can't solution. I did what I was supposed to do, what the county told me to do, and now I'm faced with this problem. So, I've sent a, talked to Chad Brandon's office, talked to Cat Kimmick's office. I filed a complaint against it because they can go to DOT and say whatever, you know, about it, but I'm here talking to you, trying to get a resolution, and that's why I'm here today. Okay?
Well, I had a discussion with a lady from DOT today.
Yes, sir.
And that was not a real very good discussion. So, I mean, I don't know what we're going to do. I've left it up to this lawyer over here, so he's going to have to take care of making, somebody got to pick it up. That's what I told the lady from DOT. Somebody needs to pick it up. That's all I want to do.
We've got another big pile on forty-seven also.
Yeah, several piles around.
There'll be ten or more. So, several things happened here. Y'all remember, towards the end of the year, we started getting down to it. We said, "Look, really work with your constituents. Let's try to make sure everything's up. Let's make sure everything's out." We did what we could. Seventy-some thousand people, things are going to get through the cracks. We know that. Kevin's staff's gone out into the county. They've identified piles that were there before the deadline, piles that were there after the deadline. We've got a list of about sixty-five, is that right, Ken? About sixty-five. We handed all those off to our code enforcement officers. Winston's the one that I think Mr. Turk's been dealing with. Said, "Look, reach out to these people. Let them know that it's past the deadline. We need to get something done." There's two reasons for that. One is we want people to know that it's past the deadline, we need to get something done. The other thing we're doing is we're cataloging and documenting everything, and part of the reason we're sending out citations, you got a citation is what that is. And it says up to a thousand, so you don't necessarily
All I see is that number.
It's scary enough, right? No, listen, I'm, your commissioner and I had a good talk today, and we'll try to get the bottom. The bottom line is this, guys, and it's what we talked about at the last meeting, these things become serious public safety issues.
That's my concern.
And that's where
My county
If we cannot get the DOT to do what the DOT needs to do and subject to resource availability because it is limited, we only have so many debris trucks and so many people, we are going to be trying to get this stuff up, but the circumstances of picking it up are going to be different because after the end of the year, we're not really getting reimbursed for this anymore. So, we'll work with you, Mr. Turk. I understand what you're saying. I think we'll work with every constituent we possibly can, but for every Mr. Turk we have, I think Kevin will tell you, we got ten other constituents who were taking unfair advantage of the situation, so.
I didn't do that, I promise.
Again, good conversation with your commissioner today. You came here tonight, which says a lot. We'll stay on top of it. My concern, and I think the concern that Public Works has, is that somebody's going to get hurt.
Well, it does impede, you know, you're looking down from air, when you pull out air exploring and you look, which traffic, you know, is coming this way, but still, if you're pulling out that way, it impedes your sight.
My brother, my sister-in-law, and my two nieces use that intersection every day.
Okay. You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, so I'm with you, and so we will look at it. When we talked today, four-forty-five, it was pretty late, so give me some time to get on top of it.
I appreciate everything you're doing. I just, I don't have a lot of recourse, and I'm just trying to exhaust all avenues.
Welcome to the club. When you're dealing with DOT, it's their road.
I know.
Sir, Jake Beach is the man, he's my head guy, was a charge.
Yeah, I call him a nice guy.
And Jake did discuss with me your situation.
Yes, sir.
At the end of the day, and I do see your point, the clarity between the state road and county road.
Yes, sir.
Simply put, that is the DOT's jurisdiction. So, we have places all over the county that we're running into this. So, we cleaned up on our side of the road.
Y'all sure did.
Yes, sir.
That's right.
I guess what my question to you for clarity purposes is the department taking the position they're simply not coming back?
Ms. Lola, the same one that Mr. Everett spoke to, I spoke to her, you know, and she said that what she has come across her desk says, "No more. They're not picking up one thing else. All their resources have gone south." And I don't understand that, but she said that's what's happened. Their resources have gone south, and on the interstate's cleaning up, and they will no longer be picking up on any of the state roads around the county. So, she says absolutely not. She said, "This is, quote, 'The commissioner set the date. We didn't set the date. It's their problem.'" Now, I'm not being ugly. I'm just saying that's what she told me on the phone.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for clarity purposes, I wasn't part of any of these conversations. Lack of better word, we do not have jurisdiction on the state highway.
We didn't set a date for something we don't have jurisdiction over.
Correct.
And then Mr. Turk, I mean, right there, we had discussion today, Eco Building, you know, our old contractor who's sitting right out in Tuscaloosa, I mean, not very far from where he's at, picking up DOT trash somewhere, because that, them hills out there ain't ours.
I completely agree. Something didn't make it sense here.
Yeah. I had two piles picked up, one south and one north of me. I watched this very closely because I was concerned, because we were running down to the wire with getting my stuff out at the end, all I could get out. Like I said, I broke my tractor. I wasn't able to get anything else out and still have more than I could get out. But I saw piles south of the interstate and then one up north of me a little bit, a pretty good pile, both of them being picked up off the DOT highway after that date of the seventeenth. Saw that with my own eyes. So, she denies it. I'm, what can I say? I saw it.
Of course, I know you're running crazy with it, as I would too, if I was facing a thousand-dollar-a-day fine, but
Yes, sir.
And I hate to say it, I'd go visit that site on Tuscaloosa, you know? I mean, because heck, they got monitors there, there's trucks parked everywhere. It's all DOT, and there's trucks parked everywhere, it, it's all DOT, and.
I don't even know what you're talking about, to be honest with you.
Sir?
I don't even know what you're talking about.
Okay, if you're going to be running at the meeting, I, you know, I'll give you directions, but it's not very far from where you're at.
I held FEMA for, break for FEMA twice, so I've been a contractor for, subcontractor for them before, but not on this hurricane, that was back in 2009.
Because I'm like Kevin, I mean, we could set jurisdiction on what we can jurisdiction.
That's, that's the whole problem is, we, it's like asking us to do something for another county, we, we don't, we don't have jurisdiction over that pile, or, or the fines or anything else, you know?
Right. And the gentleman, Mr. Winston, told me that he didn't even want to get involved in this mess, but he really didn't have a choice, because it is his job, and I get that, you know? I, I don't know why DOT is being so hard-nosed about it, you know, FEMA would have gladly reimbursed, and the piles have been sitting there two months now, you know? It's, it's not like they weren't going to get reimbursement for it, I just don't understand the, the metrics behind it that makes it so impossible. I mean, I, I know what you're saying, that it's not the county's road, and I, because y'all did what you're supposed to do, Racetrack Road was cleaned up, the piles I had put out there, all that I could, and all the reason I ran that out was because I was running out of time, and it was on that side of the property, and I figured I'd just get it out here quick, otherwise I took it all around the Racetrack Road, but I didn't know that they wouldn't pick it up, because they didn't make an announcement to the citizens saying, and I told Ms. Lola that, I said, y'all didn't tell us, hey, we're not going to pick this up, we've made too fast, there's not going to be, you didn't post nothing in the newspaper, you didn't make an announcement, we had no way of knowing, I watched you guys meeting again today, just to make sure I was on point with this, you know? But, I just, you know, she says, oh, it's the county's problem. County says it's not my jurisdiction, DOT's jurisdiction, what does a citizen do?
Well, we'll do what we can on our part, but if you would, I'll get with you here in just a minute, because.
All right.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Lemon? Yes, ma'am.
Harbor Limway, 393 Northwest Fairway Drive. Um, the reason I'm here is to ask each commissioner to attend the Lake Shore Hospital Authority Special Meeting on the 27th, excuse me, at 5:15. The authority needs to dissolve itself, excuse me, and they aren't doing that, which they need to do. And currently, the authority is considering a contract with Palms Medical, which is a not-for-profit, that would be in direct competition to the County Health Department, and I think it's something that you guys should go to and hear, because to me, it would be a duplication of services and a waste, a waste of taxpayer dollars to subsidize Palms Medical, they've got a clinic in Five Points, they've got one out on West 90, and if they were going to do something, they need to do something in the medical desert down in the Fort White area. So please make sure you attend the meeting. Commissioner Hollingsworth was there on Monday, but he got called out on a phone call, but something needs to be done to get rid of the hospital authority, it's useless, thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Stu Wilker. Living six and a half miles south of the appears to be disappearing thriving metropolis of Fort White, I have a couple of things, you look at today's consent agenda, you see minutes from April of 2024, August, December, I'm not exactly sure why the minutes are so far behind, I know why they got behind a little bit, but there's more than one person that works at the clerk of the courts to take county minutes, and you can't blame that on one person. My understanding from the clerk of the court is that beginning at the end of, or the end of this month or the beginning of next month, he's a year behind, he's supposed to be posting the minutes on the clerk's website, which is where just about everybody else does. So that's supposed to be a big change, and we won't have this problem. I mean, I don't know how you went on it, know what goes on at the rest of the meeting, when the minutes aren't available time-wise. I don't know, as far as the North Florida Regional Utility, it took, uh, North Florida Professional Services and Dale Williams, looks like two months, turn over some of the public records, I don't know if the county has received them yet, have they?
I have not received them, they may have been given to Mr. Swisher.
I don't know if the county has received them yet, the county is, this thing is a big mess, regardless of what the, the heads of this authority say. My final thing, and the text messages, is Mr. Williams has to turn those over too. He does a lot of work by text message, I know that personally, because I've received his text messages, and quite frankly, I've never had a problem getting them when he deals with people in the hospital authority. So whatever messages went into the water utility authority, the county needs to be in possession of them too, for public inspection. The final thing is the sheriff's raises. Tonight, you approved, I guess it was $700,000, to give the deputies at the sheriff's office raises. I presume they didn't get them on October 1st? So, everybody, if, if I understand what went on because of this board, it was pretty clear that a lot of you guys were not supporting the past sheriff, Mark Hunter, he was supporting the new sheriff. And those monies were withheld from the sheriff's office, and Mark Hunter, I'm not sure why, whether it was a political thing by this board, and I'd like to know, I think the public is, uh, should be aware of whatever explanation you have, that my understanding is, from what you've done tonight, that those deputies didn't get their raises, when other people and employees in the county did. And if, if that's right, I'd like to know why you guys think politicizing the raises of road deputies who put their lives on the line every day, a job that I'm sure most of us wouldn't want to do, I know I wouldn't, is just wrong. Thank you very much, Chairman, I do appreciate an explanation, maybe you could help me. And the vote.
All right. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Tim Atkinson. Um, I've been a resident of the county since Ron Williams was a young man, first serving on this board, so I guess that makes me a relic. I want to thank you all for putting the issue of Lake Shore Hospital Authority out for the voters to speak on. I, I really hope this will move forward. I addressed the Lake Shore Hospital Authority night before last, told them that it was too bad that it was a straw vote, not a, a binding election, because if it had been a binding, an election, it would have been declared a landslide. The voters have spoken, the people have made it very clear that they don't want Lake Shore Hospital Authority making decisions about the taxpayers' assets in healthcare facilities and, and all those assets. More importantly, because it was not an election, it requires this tortuous process to get the Lake Shore Hospital Authority dissolved and get the resources under y'all's jurisdiction where, where it belongs. So, I'm just here, number one, to thank you for taking that action. I, I encourage you to not let up, this is a very serious issue. It goes beyond any single issue that they are dealing with, whether it's Palms Medical, or the women's building for the, uh, for the college, or for the courts, or Meridian, uh, getting the hospital itself donated to them, it's bigger than that. This is taxpayer resources, $20 million in capital assets, the whole campus, and it is not, uh, being, it's not being governed by the, the body that should have it and should take care of it. So I really hope you all stick with it and, and, and this happens. Uh, I would encourage you not only to attend that meeting, but also to review on YouTube the meeting of, uh, two nights ago. It will really inform you about how that board is functioning and how close it is to being non-functional.
Mr. Atkinson, one thing I, I took from, from being there is, they just don't have enough board members, I think that was something that happened with, through the governor's office or whatever, one, one person's sick, they can't, they can't vote. I mean, it's like they're, they're, they're got a stranglehold all the time trying to get things done, and it sounds like, what was it, February 1st, or what date was it that they said?
I forget, February, early February.
Early February, because of some letter that this city sent away, it just, a bunch of rigmarole, but hopefully they'll have it all taken care of first February, that's what it sounds like.
That, that meeting was a demonstration of how, can I finish this?
Yeah, go right ahead.
How closely it started being non-functional. They've got five members on the board, supposed to be seven, they're appointed by the governor, not by, answerable to the people at all. One mem, one member was absent, because her husband had trouble about fast surgery. One member declared a conflict of interest and says, I can't vote on this. So they called a recess and sent the secretary.
To call the lady. To call the lady. They're doing, they're working their butt off to do it, you know? They actually called her at the hospital or wherever and said, hey, when can you be here?
Got some dates for a special meeting when she could be there. Well, before the meeting was over, the member decided that he didn't have a conflict of interest and could have voted anyway.
Be like us, it'd be like us having two commissioners that are trying to do business. It just ain't, it just don't work.
Two of them stumped their toe and can't make it to the meeting, they can't function at all, and that is what happened a couple of years ago, when for months and months, they couldn't meet and have a forum or do any business.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Uh, I would love to get a copy of the proposed bill, I read it, but I can't find it again, it's.
I think I got your record request this afternoon.
Great, great, I read it, I like it, I hope you get it done.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else? Okay. While Tim's making his way back to the IFAB board, uh, just for the rares, all tax, all dollars spent at the Lake Shore Hospital Authority is taxpayer dollars.
Yes.
Take that to the bank, and that's, you, you'll understand that, what I'm talking about at the latter date, but every dollar spent over there is generated some which way or another through the taxpayers, or the taxpayers benefit. Okay. At this point in time, Madam Clerk, you got any news for us? You got new neck?
Commissioner Murphy, I have one thing on staff level. Um, you guys will remember the prohibition on outdoor camping, we talked about it some time ago, that if you wanted to establish a campground, you have to do all these other things. Well, we're all paying close attention to that, because there's a civil action embedded in that statute. The language says that the county municipality may not authorize or otherwise allow any person to regularly engage public camping. We do have some county property where there are some people that spend quite a few nights camping, I think y'all know where they are. I've asked the sign shop, Kevin's helped me out with it, and so has David, to generate signs that notify people of our already existing prohibition on outdoor camping, we've already had it in ordinance for a long, long time. But when you see those up, I just want you to know where they came from. It says absolutely no outdoor camping allowed, up to $500 fine, up to 60 days in jail. You'll see those, I just didn't want anybody to be caught off guard by.
Well, if they don't pay that $500, what they gonna do? Go to jail, then we gonna have to take care of them.
But, but, believe it or not, that conversation's been happening, like, is that really what you want? So what we're, we're, we're posting the signs for two reasons, one, we want the people to know it's illegal, two, if we ever get sued for otherwise allowing camping, I can point to those signs and say, what else do you want us to do? Like, we're not going to hire a guard to sit out there and make sure, but we put up signs, if we catch people, we'll prosecute them, that's all we can do as a government. So, it's just us taking the extra step to make sure that that little hole in the statute doesn't come back to bite us.
Kevin, you have anything else?
Oh, sir.
David?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk? Kevin?
I'm good.
You good? You're up.
I'd just like to say, I appreciate the speaker and for accommodating us over in Tallahassee and taking the time to talk to us, and we had some encouraging conversations, and, uh, hopefully somebody will come to fruition.
Yep, that's a good trick. Robbie?
No, sir, I just want to tell the DOT, thank you for taking care of us with these roads.
You got to make a call about debris. We're going to, he robbing your DOT hookup family.
Man, that's debris, there's still debris. There's still debris popping up on the highway.
Okay, I do. I would like to get a update on our survey on our stop signs, flashing stop signs, can I get that, please? Next meeting or whatever? Okay, go ahead.
So, we are currently doing the study, it's moving forward, we had a capital project update as recent as today, and it is moving along real well, I mean, it's an extensive study, but, uh, as far as the exact timeframe, we contracted it out, I do not know, I mean, they're moving along with it. Uh, we had 1:30 PM capital project update that was discussed.
Okay, well, I've got, people asking me about them, so.
You're actively doing your study as you speak.
All right, thank you.
And, uh, board, real quick, uh, this week at Economic Development, TDC, uh, there was a rearrangement of the, uh, meeting room, I think y'all accommodated this afternoon, and, uh, and I'm going to be working with Link, and, uh, we're going to do a little bit of rearranging here just for some audio issues and stuff, uh, but, uh, me and Link will be going through this. David, I think I've had some discussion with you about, nothing major, but I think we're just going to try to get this thing organized a little bit better, where we can have a little bit more, uh, better meetings. Better meetings? So, with that being said, look for a motion measure.
Some moves.